Okay, welcome to special town council meeting for Monday, September fourteenth, two thousand and fifteen. On tonight's agenda is Hughes Brothers' personal property tax abatement request. It's continued from September first, two thousand and fifteen council meeting. So, first thing up tonight, we'll have Kelly Cadda, the towns tax assessor, come and explain her view or the town's view on the assessment.
I think you've probably all read enough to be really tired. But at the last council meeting, I think it was Greg that asked how many municipalities don't charge personal property tax? And I have the listing. The sixty towns listed there, and ten out of the sixty do not charge personal property tax.
So, there are sixty, ten, sixty?
That's correct. However, the state estimates a number and puts it into their state valuation number, which would decrease their state aid to education and the municipal revenue sharing and increase their county tax on a value that they're not collecting any taxes on. The questions tonight, as I understand them, are, is it a mining operation in Winterport? And what personal property is dedicated to that use? You've heard my story of how this all occurred. Does anybody have any questions?
Are you disputing, or are you arguing that this is not a mining operation?
I didn't say that.
Well, let me ask you.
There were several.
Consider a mining operation.
Well, depends on what definition you use.
Use whatever definition you would have to use in your position. Is it, or is there not?
Title thirty-six describes it as a mineral extraction. That's the property tax, title thirty-six. That's how it's described in that section of the law. You have that information from attorney Russell.
Now, is mineral extraction considered mining?
Mineral extraction is, yes. Per title thirty-six.
That means nothing to the annual of your title thirty-six.
That's property tax law. That was provided to you folks. You do have that section.
So, again, do you, as the town tax assessor, the official, consider this operation in Winterport to be a mining operation?
They are extracting stone and crushing it. I am using the Leeds case, which found for the company that they could not be charged tax in the community where the equipment was located, but that equipment was taxable in the community of their home base. That is my platform that I'm standing on. That's been submitted to you as well. It's up to you to determine as a council, do you feel this abatement is warranted? That's your job. They did not bring that abatement to me.
Well, I think, in my mind, the larger question is, even if we decided to abate last year's taxes, what's gonna happen in the future?
They can go the same route if they choose. That's their choice.
And do this every single year.
That's a choice.
So, you are saying that, in your mind, it is not a mining operation?
I have abated everything that I feel legally needs to be abated and is permanently affixed to the ground. The other equipment is motorized. It can be transported from that site to another site, to anywhere. And their home office is located in Hampton.
Thank you. Kelly, if I may, Mrs. Hughes has said, and I can see from all indications, they do not transport that equipment from point A to B. It stays in the mine year-round, okay? The other question is, I don't understand, the Leeds case, you're saying that it was determined that you can tax where their home base is?
That's correct.
For instance, their home base is Hampton.
Correct.
But it's found that, in the Leeds case, they could not tax outside their home base.
That's correct.
Which would be, in this case, Winterport.
That's correct.
So, I'm confused about your premise that you're sticking by that, but yet, but yet you're saying they should be taxed on this in Winterport. So, I'm confused.
I didn't say that they should be taxed on it in Winterport. In the Leeds case, the company's home base was Portland. Leeds, the equipment was located in the town of Leeds. They sent the company a tax bill. The company took the town of Leeds to court and won because their base of operation was in Portland, and they were found that even by crushing stone, they were not manufacturing.
Right.
They were not substantially changing what that product was. It comes out of the ground and it just gets smaller. They weren't adding anything to it.
Correct.
That's the premise of that case. That Leeds could not legally tax it, but that tax money belonged to the home base office.
But in this case, Winterport can legally tax it, right?
No. No, not the motorized stuff. Everything that's attached to the ground, yes. Which is why I abated it.
Well, if Winterport can't tax it, how can we tax it?
Because their home base is located here in Hampton.
But, on the other hand, I believe our attorney said last time, if it's a mining operation, we can't tax it.
That is the beginning of that sentence, but is it permanently placed there? Does it never move? Are they registering those vehicles? What else is coming into play?
Well, I don't believe the vehicles are registered, from what I understand. This is what I understand. So, in my opinion, they are permanently placed at that facility.
And this is what the council needs to decide this.
Right.
It wasn't brought to me.
Council member.
Well, I know that was the property proceeding a lot, so I don't wanna waste Kelly's time, but I'm wondering if I can direct the question to the town attorney while Kelly's at the podium, okay?
Yeah.
Every time in this discussion, last time and tonight, I think I'm clear, I told a certain conjunction state, but then I get confused. So, my question to the attorney is, not to ask you to define whether that operation in Winterport is a mine or not, but if it were considered to be mining, would Hampton still have the legal authority to collect taxes on personal property equipment at
I think, as I tried to explain my memo, I think there are basically two issues you have to decide. One is their mining activity, is that a mining operation in Winterport? Secondly, is the personal property at issue? I mean, we haven't been providing, at least to my knowledge, we haven't been provided of a list of the property that was assessed that's in question. Was that personal property dedicated to that activity in Winterport? I mean, some of the equipment, no question, but some of the equipment, like loaders and graders and trucks, were they there all the time dedicated to that? I think that's what you've gotta determine. Any other questions? Janet, would you like to speak?
One question that just came to my mind, and maybe Tom could help me, is, Tom, do you know what year the mining exemption was added to the personal property tax law? Because I'm pretty sure it wasn't, I'm pretty sure it was in like, in the last fifty years.
I don't know the exact date, but I don't think, it was in the statute in nineteen twenty-eight when Leeds was decided.
Right. I looked it up before.
Leeds was decided on manufacturing, and they said it was not manufacturing, it wasn't stock and trade, but they didn't discuss mining, because I don't believe it was in the statute at that time.
I'm thinking that our industry perhaps needed that clarification in itself, and that's why that exemption has been added to that law. If we're not considered manufacturing, then we're considered mining, and we use it interchangeably. If the question is, what is mining? I gave you a list of the definitions, and that was confusing to me, because the rest of us all talk about it like, you know, it's, you know, everyday language, and it hit me after the last meeting that it's not everyday language to everyone. But, I referenced a number of just common everyday things, like Wikipedia and Webster's and Encyclopedia, and Federal Bureau of Mines identifies that a mine site means an area of the mine where the mining operations occur, and that's on their first page towards the bottom, and it says that mining operations mean mine development, drilling, blasting, extraction, milling, crushing, screening, sizing of materials out of mine, maintenance and repair of mining equipment, and associated haulage of materials within the mine. Once you leave the mine, it's not considered to be part of the mine, and nor is it regulated.
So, I can hear it better.
Thank you. I also added, I have a aggregate handbook that sits on my desk, and it's from the National Stone Association, and I copied the definitions out of that. I just opened it, and this is from the National Stone Association that identifies that the term extraction also includes removal and the mining process, the reclamation of the land, and it's used interchangeably, it says, with mining and quarry. And there's a couple different, when people are thinking about mining, they're thinking, we're, okay, we're mining copper, or we're mining coal underground, but this is called surface mining, and it's, and eighty percent of the mining in the US is surface mining, not underground mining. And I think a lot of people are there, and coal mining has been regulated for a very, very long time, and so everybody's accustomed to that, and surface mining has been regulated over the last, you know, thirty, forty years. So, it is a little different. If you're looking for resources, you'll find a lot on coal, a little less on the surface. But, on page three is, you know, why we feel that we're a mine, and why it seems so obvious to us, we're just scratching our heads, I'm just, you know, asking, wondering why we would not think that we're a mine. We have a DEP permit, and I've attached the first page. If you Google, if you go on the DEP's website, the DEP collects and maintains an inventory of active and inactive mines, and in there, that's for small to medium-sized pits and quarries and other mining facilities. Could be peat mining, it could be, there's a gemstone mine in the, down in the, on the east coast, there's granite mining, people make granite, curb and whatnot. And you won't find Hughes Brothers on there, and that's because we're not considered a small mine or a medium mine, we're considered a large mine, so we're not just a little gravel pit. And we do have a couple of those, Newburgh and Hampton, which is all used up, but we've, what you will find is that we're licensed under Site Location of Development Law, and if any one of you have any familiarity with that, you'll know that that's very stringent permit. So, we have stringent requirements that are required as part of that. And attachments, which I'd numbered as six, to help you refer to it, and you would see that the first couple pages of our permit application back in the eighties, and the actual application was application for approval of mining and excavation activity under the Site Location of Development Law. And that's the criteria that we had to, just to get the permit there. I also just copied the first page of the DEP permit that we do have, and I think that your staff have provided you with that same permit, which is on file here at the town. And summary of DEP's definition, or, you know, our description of our facility is, the applicant is requesting approval of a gravel mining operation off the Coles Corner Road in Winterport. Total site is a hundred and twenty-eight acres, ninety acres of area is for excavation. As some of you know, the smaller permit is five acres, and then you can expand if you have special permits, but usually five acres, you rehab it, then you do five more, and you do five more. Whereas, it's a lot of engineering and a lot of, you know, cementation ponds, all kinds of different things that allow us to operate as a large entity. It says the gravel mining operation will include excavation, which we do, with two loaders, crushing, which we do with our crushing plant, washing, which we do with our washing plant, screening, the screening, the crushing, there's two different types of crushers, another screener, they're all attached, there's conveyors going all over the place, and then you'll see big stockpiles of material. That all gets washed, so that fines are taken out, so that you can use it in concrete and on the state highways. It says that the mining operation will be done in accordance with the site plans, that's what makes us different, and we have finished grading plans and so on and so forth. That, so, right there, that you see that, you know, we have a permit for a mine, we have an application for a mine, we have a permit from the mine from the state of Maine. Our license number is identified there, you can look us up, you can talk to Mark Stebbins, the mining coordinator, which I think that you already have done, I understand that someone has spoken with him, and he explained, you know, what a mine is to him, and how he regulates those mines. He, I've also added a map, it's from the office of, the state OGIS office, which you can find on that same site, the mining site, which identifies all the licensed mining areas, and I've provided you with a picture of that, that's, they use a Google Earth base. You will see that, I've circled that, and I have a permanent marker. Also, the Mine Safety and Health Administration, which years ago was called the Bureau of, the Federal Bureau of Mines, and they, we have a license number, which I've provided you a copy of the license number and the affiliated federal information, which you can get right online, any of you can get online, you can put that number in, you can find anything out that you wanna know about Hughes Brothers. The, our federal MSHA number, seventeen double zero four two five. We see the, you can attach that information. Also, if, in order to be at that mine, you have to have twenty-four hours of training, and not, not a bit less, and you have to be certified by MSHA in order to work at that mine. There are a handful of MSHA instructors, it's done every day, and I've actually worked quite hard to get my own instructor's certification, so that we can be better at health and safety in our organization, and the organization throughout, all the organizations throughout the state, we've teamed up with others. You'll see that the, I've attached a sample of what that would look like, and you will see, again, it says miner. And I've attached the certificates of those four people who are dedicated to that site. Feel free to contact any or all four of them, they will tell you that they're dedicated to that site. One of the fellows, Jason Skilling, he'll tell you that he's dedicated to his loader, and by God, no one else is getting in it. They, it stays there, he provides the crusher and screener with all of the aggregates. The other fellow is, you'll see in here, his name is Sean, and he runs the other loader, same thing. Loader doesn't leave the site. We cannot leave, you have to have two people at a mine site at all times, and, so you have to have the two loader, typically you have the two loader operators there all the time, one's out sick, at least you have one. If our loaders are broke down, we might bring something in for replacement, but we don't take them anywhere else, we can't. Can't, you can't run the facility without two. Again, one loads the trucks coming in from the stockpiles, the finished product, loads, picks it up, puts it on the truck. We have trucks anywhere from Lane Construction to any other number of local contractors. Typically, we don't have people off the street there, if they want landscape materials, typically they're gone to, you know, Bill Hodgson in town, and a few others, that we do provide them with our materials. And we have a small bins down at our shop that, you know, that we do, do provide some landscapers with some materials. But, in addition to that, so we have the two loaders, and they have to be in good shape. Those loaders are inspected every single day, certified, and in the mine, the MSHA binder, every single day. Our tire mine is inspected every single day. We have all those reports, if you'd like to see them, any day, just give me the date. We also have a water truck, we can't take the water truck out, one, it's very old, and you couldn't get it registered if you wanted to. Never leaves the site, and we have to have it there. We have a DEP air emissions license, and we have to have ten percent opacity on the roadways. MSHA tells us how to run our traffic, they tell us how to keep our slopes, how to keep our high walls, they tell us how we're gonna run our equipment, what screens we're gonna do to protect workers, they tell us how we're going to protect people from high side walls in the case, if you have a truck that kinda goes off the road or whatnot. Everything we do is regulated by the mine, the Bureau of Mines. It's regulated by the DEP. There's no question that that facility is a mine, and we do mining, that's what we do. There is some confusion, I think, to some, and some of us have crushers, and it's more, it's more inexpensive if you had a portable crusher and you were highway construction. We talked about Shaw Brothers last year. If you're a big highway builder, you're gonna bring your stuff to that multimillion dollar highway, and you've seen them. You take your crusher, and you transport it on a trailer, and it's made portable. These aren't, these are not made portable, you're not gonna put it all on a truck and move it anywhere, nowhere, and it hasn't left there since the seventies. And, so, people like Shaw Brothers put those crushers on, they move, they might sit here in, you know, in Brewer for two or three years while they finish a road project, it might go somewhere else. It might only go to the mine for six months, and they crush, 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 move somewhere else, crush, crush, crush. There, it's a lot more prevalent these days. Twenty years ago, it wasn't. There are several places in the state of Maine where the stuff is permanent, doesn't go anywhere, and that's people like us. It's people like Lanes, it's people like Hughes Brothers, it's people like the Trombleys up north, it's Dragon, it's those people, people with concrete plants. Me, I would call Thibodeau a mining company. We do have a contracting division, and yes, we do do similar things, take a screen to a different pit. If we're taking, we have a screen, it's sitting at our Hampton facility, it's on our personal property tax list, inventory list, as a mobile equipment. If we take that, and we move it to Brewer, if we move it to Newburgh, it's on the list. That's it, because we move it around. We know we have to pay for that tax somewhere. And if our other loaders, they move around, they go to a job site, they go to our quarry, and I mentioned that we have a quarry in Dedham, as of today, that stuff is not dedicated, it's on your list. We're not trying to escape tax. What we're asking for you to do is to follow the law. And we are a mining facility, we're exempt. Do we think we're a manufacturing facility? You're darn right we do, because we manufacture concrete, and that's, and that's our business. We manufacture concrete, if you check our SIC code, you'll probably see that, you know, concrete's in there. We do, absolutely. It's manufacturing, it looks like, based on Kelly's definition, and in talking with Maine Revenue, is that site a manufacturing site? It sounds like Tom's saying no. I can accept that, but I can't accept that it's not a mining facility. I did talk to the director of Maine Revenue, he understands, if you, if you want another opinion, you should talk to him, because there is a difference. You move around or you stay put. So, here, I'm telling you, you can say, I don't believe you, Janet, you don't have any, you can't prove to me that that equipment's gone anywhere, but you won't find that it's registered. Loaders haven't gone anywhere, the water truck hasn't gone anywhere, it's old, haul trucks and those great big things, it's really hard to move that around, and it's not going anywhere unless it has to go to Caterpillar. We're gonna maintain that on-site, so we have that, we have a haul truck, great big one, tires as big as you. We have two loaders, have to keep them new, they've gotta be in good shape, they, you can't have operational problems with those loaders down there, and they, they work hard every day, constant, every single day, every minute of the day, they're working. And we have a skid steer, which cleans out around things. That's, for the most part, that's it. Once in a while, you might see a grader, I think we have an old grader there, but I don't think it's been working much by the looks of the road, so we have some old stuff. Can we, can we pay excise tax? You're darn right we could. That isn't, and you're gonna see the same exemption and the same descriptions for excise tax. We used to do a lot of registering our trucks and whatnot in Winterport, and I think, really, I think Hughes Brothers, just, there was more convenience in coming here, was to split it up a little. We've done things, other things with the town of Winterport, got together the other people on the road, build roads, it's the only way that we can offset our presence there. But when I came to you the first time, I'm not here, I'm here to ask you to follow the law, to consider that we are a mining company, there's just no way you can't consider us a mining company. And I'm asking you not to follow me around to our next town. And, and this is my issue, and this is why I came back here, that's two parts. One, we did not feel that we owed the tax, and two, we can't expand our company and move to another town and say, we have to pay all the personal property tax to the town of Hampton. We need to set up shop and go, hey, guys, I'm gonna use your road, so I've got to give you money to use your road in the form of tax. Got to fairly give you personal property tax. Can't, we can't expand in Dedham or Eddington, and then not bring anything to the town. It's just not fair, and it's just not right. It isn't. If we bring some loaders into that, into either one of those towns, and we spend, we put a half a million dollars worth of equipment, we're probably not gonna take it from here, but we need to be able to tell that town that, that we will pay excise tax and/or personal property tax and real estate tax in their town. Otherwise, we just hear from the locals, there's no benefit to approving a facility here in this town. We've heard it over and over again. So, that's, that's, yes, David.
Okay. So, say, you know, we all agree that this is a mining facility. You've said there's a skid steer, two loaders, a crusher, a water truck, and an off-road truck, is that what?
Yeah.
The property is on that property?
Yeah.
Does this pit run year-round?
It runs, it's open year-round, but when it's freezing conditions, we can't do any washing. So, usually what happens is, which two to three people get laid off for those months, in say, January, February, and then we have two people that stay on-site, we keep two. That Brian Parsons that you see on that list, he's there year-round. Usually what we do, we don't, we don't, we can't plow with those loaders, because they're not registered. That one loader is, continues to work, that's all it does, work, like I said, works, 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 and the other one's parked in that garage, doesn't go anywhere. Water truck's emptied, we don't do any watering, it just, it's parked in the garage as well.
So, I guess I'm...
We have other skid steers too, so, skid steers, and there's no need to move them around.
I'm confused on why, if you go to Dedham, and you're considered a mine, and if you install the same stuff that you've done in Winterport, and you're telling us it's, we're not gonna collect the money, why would Dedham or Eddington assume they're gonna not collect the money? You know what I'm saying?
Because the whole purpose of the, the whole purpose of the exemption for personal property tax is not that, not to not pay it, it's to pay it in the location that the mine is. So, personal property tax for mining facilities is due to the town you're in, and it's the same thing that we see for excise tax as well.
So, my, my point is, is, all right, we understand that, so why would you say that we can't go to another town and do business because you're gonna take our tax dollars? Well, I'm not gonna take your tax dollars if that town says you're a mine and you've got equipment there. Legally, I can't, right?
That's my interpretation, but I'm not feeling that right now in the town of Hampton.
Good. Any other questions? Terry?
So, I guess, for me...
So I guess, for me, what it comes down to, and, and there's no question in my mind that the Winterport facility is a mining operation. So we'll get rid of that right off quick. It appears that it's coming down to whatever the movable equipment that is there. When I say movable, I mean, it, that it's, anything that's movable in the, that's, you know, that you use as domiciled in the, in the town of Hampden is taxable as personal property through the town of Hampden. I understand that. So the, it seems that, that equipment that is dedicated to this site in Winterport is also being now added to that list of other movable equipment that you use in your normal operations outside of Winterport. So.
It's kind of the opposite. What happened is, is that everything is included on that list.
Even, even, even the stuff that's in Winterport?
Everything in Winterport was.
Okay.
After the fact.
Well, I was going to get to that.
Yeah, after the fact. And then, and then after Kelly visited the site, seen it with her own eyes, said that, that portion is, that portion, the crusher, screener's, those types of things are all permanently affixed by a foundation. And so it sounds to me like her feeling is, is if it can be moved, then it should be taxed as personal property.
Correct.
And kind of like, I think is what's described as manufacturing, that's what you do, right?
Yep. Is, is this operation that you're proposing for Dedham or for Eddington going to be a mining operation also?
Yes.
Okay. So any equipment, any dedicated equipment you have there outside of the stuff that's platformed or foundationed to, you know, the, the site itself, any of the movable equipment? If, if the same process is used going forward, that means that every piece of movable equipment that you have either in Dedham or Eddington is going to be included in your personal property tax list for Hampden? Because that's what they're doing right now, right?
That's not what we're doing, that's what you're doing.
Correct. No, I, I understand.
Yeah.
And by having, by defining this as a mining operation, I find it hard to believe that, that only the permanently affixed, affixed equipment falls under this exemption.
It is not, that doesn't fall under the exemption. That's considered part of real estate then.
Exactly.
So it's still not, the exemption didn't apply to that. It's just, you can't tax it as personal property if it's part of real estate.
I understand.
Yeah.
But the point I'm trying to make is that it's not a mining operation if you don't have equipment to mine the material. And you have to have movable equipment to do that.
Absolutely.
And the stuff that is there is, you know, and I have no reason to doubt what you're saying, that it's all dedicated to this site. It's not running up and down the road, going from Jaw Bay to Jaw Beat or anything like that. It's, you know.
Entire list of inventory of loaders and excavators that we do have on our personal property tax here. We pay a lot of personal property tax and excise tax in this town. And we, we should. It's due. All we're asking is not to be charged what's not due.
Dennis?
I'm not laughing at you or your situation.
I know, it's hard.
Well, I feel to an extent editorially like we're being challenged to basically walk into this room with knowledge we didn't have when we walked into this room. And so it's a moving process. Would you agree that at least the tone of some of the correspondence between you and the assessor or the company and the assessor was a little negative or hostile initially?
Absolutely.
Do you think that played a part in how this has played out?
I don't, I don't think there's any hostility anywhere until after we, we met and found that, that, that the town was assessing our crushers and that we had a bill of, I can't remember what it was, $20,000 and.
My recall isn't perfect, but I definitely remember reading emails or letters.
Absolutely.
Where the tone was pretty elevated.
Absolutely.
Early on. I'm just bringing it up because, you know, in the real world, that kind of stuff has an effect on how communication goes after the fact. And I think it played out here a little bit. Is it, is it accurate for me to believe that, and I don't want to do this, but should someone want to make a case to say that Hughes Brothers was non-compliant in terms of some deadlines of providing some information in this process?
I do not agree with that.
You don't?
No, not at all.
Okay. That's all for now. I have other comments and I'd like to ask another question at some point of the assessor and the lawyer.
Steve?
My question is simple. One question. The equipment that is in debate here is the stuff that actually moves around inside the pit. Is that equipment ever moved outside of that equip, out of that pit and used somewhere else?
Goes to Caterpillar. If you want to replace, like, help me out here, appear like a cylinder or. Yeah.
So it is moved outside of the pit?
If, if you needed a major repair.
For ma- for ma-
For major repair?
Yes.
I mean, is it ever taken outside of the pit and used somewhere else to do that work? Okay. That's, that makes it pretty clear to me. So, I mean, I might have a different opinion if you had all of your cement trucks parked down there and on the road. That would be, that's a clear distinction of the difference there.
If we parked our dump trucks down there, then we pay our excise tax down there. We don't want to park our dump trucks down there. But our dump trucks surely are part of that mining facility and our trailers are surely part. We don't have any interest taking that and parking that stuff down there. We owe, we owe tax here for that.
Dedicated 100% to mining in that facility?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I don't think that water truck's ever been out of there, I mean, either, any of that stuff. And we're not talking like a number of pieces of equipment. We're talking four, what we just described, four to five pieces of equipment.
Thank you.
I have spoken extensively with Janet and Peter about this because I've read this data over and over again. And I told Janet and she agreed that if they owed, if they felt whatsoever that they owed this money, they would pay it. Isn't that right, Janet?
Yes.
And you also told me that you.
We've never been delinquent on our, on our personal property tax or real estate tax.
Last year, you paid something like, you said 130-something thousand or plus dollars to the town of Hampden?
All taxes combined.
In taxes and whatever.
Yeah, excise tax as well. Pretty big one for a trucking company.
And I was going to ask Janet, but she already said, and a couple of the other counselors already confirmed, the fact that unequivocally, except for maintenance purposes of that piece of equipment, that equipment never, ever leaves that pit in Winterport to work on another job, either at their Hampden facility or another construction site. Isn't that right, Janet?
That loader doesn't work in Hampden or on another construction site.
And from all the data I can see, this facility in Winterport is unequivocally a mining classified facility. And you know, a couple of other things. We as a town council, not just this situation, work so hard trying to get businesses into Hampden. And I'd hate like the devil to think that we're going to make a wrong decision. We're going to make the decision one way or another. I, I've got my mind, mind made up. And it's a mining facility. And I'd hate to think that we're going to make decisions that's going to chase a longstanding construction outfit slash mining in Winterport out of the town of Hampden. Because it's so hard to get businesses here to begin with. We need to do the right thing. And I'm not worried about some of the things that were brought up at the last meeting. Quotes, we're, we're going to be setting a precedence here by abating this money. No, we're not going to be setting any precedence. If any company feels that they have been taxed unjustly, for instance, in this situation where they really don't owe that tax, then we have to do the right thing. Nevermind setting a precedence. We're not giving money back that they rightfully owe. We're going to abate hopefully tax that they don't owe to the town of Hampden. I've been.
It's not tax, and just to make it clear, it's not tax that's ever been paid to the town.
Right, you haven't paid it. I, I understand, but you're being taxed.
In the last 45 years there.
And I, I've, I've heard from Kelly, with all due respect, she says last time it was a gray area. I don't see anything gray here. And I'm not colorblind. I see black and white. Either it is or it isn't. And I do believe it's a mining facility. And I do believe Janet and Peter, when they say they do not move that equipment out of that pit because they need it there full time. That's all.
Counselor Royce?
First of all, I just want to actually thank Kelly for the job that she did up to this point. I know it's a difficult situation to be in. Also, both Peter and Janet, you know, trying to run a business like you guys are. It's, it's a difficult job and a difficult task. And I know this has been stressful on everyone. I don't agree with the tone sometimes directed at Kelly from members of the council because at the end of the day, we should look at the facts, look at the situation, make a decision based on that and not attack an employee of the town to make our point. So I want to apologize to Kelly for having to go through that. At the end of the day, I think I'm agreeing with everyone, this is a mining. I also know, you know, both Janet and Peter's reputation and as, again, honest and hardworking folks. If they tell me or tell us that this is, equipment's going to remain in the pit, it's going to remain in the pit. I'm sure if it comes back into quote unquote inventory, you close the pit, that it'll be put on the list. And for that reason, and the other thing I want to address too is, this isn't black and white. There's a lot of gray in it in the sense that I'm a layperson. I know a lot of us are laypeople around this, this, whatever you want to call this table, and that we're trying to make the best situ, make the best decision for everyone. And setting a precedence is a legitimate concern. We want to treat people, businesses, yes. We want to give them the benefit of the doubt and make sure they're paying what is fair. But the flip side of it is to treat one business differently than another. And that's what my biggest major concern is, you know, is not fair within itself. But that being said, I look at it as a mining operation. I look at that equipment as dedicated at, that facility. I understand why Kelly's looking at it the way she is, but as long as that equipment doesn't move and if it does move, it's put back in the inventory, I look at it as agreeing with the abatement. So that's where I stand.
Counselor Marvel?
Yeah, I wanted to ask either the town attorney or the assessor procedural question because this is new to me. Is it the purview of a council to grant an abatement in this case? Or should it be going another route? Because I thought I read information that suggested a different route.
Well, there was a different route early on. The assessor has jurisdiction for the first year to grant abatements. After that, after one year and before three years, it rests with the council. So you're really the only ones that have the authority to deal with it at this point. And it's limited, it's not a, you can't rule on evaluation if, issue. Somebody comes in and said, you know, you've got our house assessed too high. You folks don't have jurisdiction over that. It's just on whether there was an error, an irregularity or an illegality. And that's what, his issue is here is whether or not Hampden was a proper tax siteous and that is within your jurisdiction. And you're really the only ones that have the authority to deal with it at this point.
Just to follow up with a couple of comments. Part of the concern I've had over the last couple of weeks is that we're trying to act as a governing body over a local business. And this may sound almost foolish to some, but I would encourage all of us in the future to maybe be on first name bases in the hallway or the parking lot. But when we're trying to conduct business, refer to the name of a business and refer to the name of an assessor rather than first names. Because at times, there's a separation or delineation of role that I think matters in these cases if we're going to be fair and consistent and as knowledgeable as we can be. I'm kind of disappointed. I had like a four-page statement speech to write after I worked on the kitchen table the other day. And I won't do that to you. I'll simply agree with what I'm hearing, which I do agree that it is a mining operation and that the equipment down there, if anyone's going to tax it as personal property tax, can be by the town of Winterport and not the town of Hampden.
Any other comments? I guess I'll throw my two cents worth in. I was kind of up in the air about it. And then I kept reading these sections that the town's attorney sent us. And I agree that it is a mining operation. I had some questions on whether or not that equipment stayed there all the time. Obviously, I realize in the wintertime, it's pretty tough to wash gravel and do stuff. So, you know, I would assume that one of those loaders were plowing snow or doing something. But I'm not going to debate that, argue that with you. I'm going to take you at your word. If you tell me they stay in the pit, then they stay in the pit. Right. But, so I'm going to take you at your word and you're going to tell me that stuff's staying in the pit, I'm, I'm good with that. So what's the consensus?
I'd, I'd like to make a motion that we, as the town of Hampden, abate the amount of taxes that Hughes Brothers owes of $8,266.56 plus any accrued interest applied.
Second.
Any further discussion? Public comments? All in favor? All opposed? See you none? Okay, do, any, Counsel McAdoo?
But does this actually fix going forward? I mean.
Well, I don't know if it fixes. I think maybe it sends a clear picture to the tax assessor in town, what the feeling of the council has been. So it gives her a little bit better idea on which direction to go. I think she's kind of been hung out there too, trying to figure out which direction. So I'm in hopes maybe this has helped her in that decision.
I believe they applied for, I don't, is it better, Kelly, better or be- that system there which abates, I guess. Maybe you could explain that to the council, could you please? How that system works?
That is the business equipment tax exemption. And the bill that Hughes has received this year was for $6,795.25 because they used that tool this year for the first time. Prior to last year, because we'll just throw that one off to the side, their bill was $16,628 because they had never utilized that. If you have equipment that has, that you've purchased since 2007 and you fill out the Betty application every single year for every piece of equipment that you feel qualifies and it's found to qualify, you're exempt. You do not get a tax bill. The town reports that amount to the state and the state reimburses the town 50% of the taxes they would have collected.
If I can just say, I hope we won't have to go through this kind of situation again, ever. I never had before. For what it's worth, I'm sorry to all parties concerned that, for whatever words have been said, it's been difficult, really difficult for the councilors to make this decision one way or another or to dig into the information. I wish it could have been easier. Thank you. Thank you.
Counsel Marvel?
Well, yeah, I share some of that, Counsel Shakespeare, but I also think that it's been a learning experience. And I think that at one point or another, inevitably, when people do their jobs according to their best interpretation of those jobs, there are gonna be conflicts and findings. I don't think this is gonna be an everyday occurrence, but I think it was actually a healthy exercise for the town and the business to go through. And I think we'll all learn from it. So, you know, there's a good side to it too.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I just wanna add to, Counsel Marvel had just stated in that I, I think that it goes back to the conversation about Kelly is, I think, you know, she made the decision the best of her ability with the information she had. And I don't think anybody, including members of the town or employees of the town, should be chastised for doing what they think is right. Now, if it's something malicious, then I would agree that it has to be addressed. But I just wanna make sure Kelly feels comfortable in the sense that, at least I'm not judging. You did the best you could. We made a decision that went against that, but at the end of the day, I think it's the right decision.
And it should be noted, there's quite a lot more information on the record now than there was when the determination was made through this process.
Any other discussion?
I just hope, Kelly, there's not a line outside your door tomorrow morning, that's all.
Have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Good night.